Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the September 19th, 2017 Post Falls City Council meeting. We have sitting in for Shannon tonight, so welcome Phyllis, and please note that all council members are present. We started the meeting with a workshop on some code changes. Tonight, we do have a couple of announcements. Oktoberfest 2017 will be held next Friday, September 29th, at 5:00 PM at Camelum Park Grand Pavilion. This annual fundraiser benefits Post Falls Historical Society and is sponsored by the Post Falls Community Volunteers. The evening will include entertainment, beer tasting by local breweries, a live and silent auction, raffle items, and an authentic German meal. Tickets are $7.50 per adult and $6.50 per senior and child. And the Post Falls Highway District is seeking public input on the development of their transportation plan. They will be having an open house next Tuesday, September 26th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, at the Post Falls Highway District Office, 5629 East Celtice Way. Then I wanted to read an email we received. It says, "Mr. Mayor, shortly after 5:00 AM July 31st, 2017, while walking my dog, I slipped and fell, dislocating and breaking my left ankle. An employee of your street department, Keith Handy, came to my aid. While Mr. Handy wanted to call 911, I requested instead that he go to my home and get my husband. Mr. Handy went to my house, two blocks away, and not only brought my husband back, but then insisted in loading me in my SUV so I could be taken to the hospital. I cannot tell you how much his kindness is appreciated. Oftentimes, these good deeds go unnoticed. Thank you for having such a wonderful person and as an employee of the city." Signed Kathy Booth. So, I think I've already passed it on, Dave, or Russ, but thanks, please thank Keith Handy for us. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict?
No.
Seeing none, will you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the September 5th, 2017 City Council meeting. Item B is payables, August 29th through September 11th, 2017. Item C is off-site improvement waiver request for 1673 and 1675, East Horse Haven Avenue. Item D is professional services agreement with Walsh Comer for the city center parking plan. Item E is plat application for the cottages at Tullamore. Item F is contract with Keller Associates for wastewater collection system master plan. Item G is grant of right-of-way for Killdeer Avenue from Copper Basin Construction. And item H is contract with Gino Construction for the old Headworks Building office tenant improvement.
I have a couple of questions. First one probably for Bill Melvin. Bill, on the item D, professional service agreement for city center parking plan, can you tell us a little bit more what that was for?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and I have a map of the area that we can show you as well to discuss this. Mayor Jacobson, City Council, as the city's continuing to grow and establish more urban and city center improvements within our downtown city center area, the need for parking is becoming really clearly obvious. We've had some developments on the south end of Spokane Street that has caused some angst and issues with adjoining neighbors, but we've also have seen success across the street here with the opening of the Republic where they're using off-street parking and there's plenty of parking available there, and it's not having such an impact within the area. So, when we originally adopted the city center plan, we knew that eventually we would have to come back and address the parking issues in the entire city center area, and now that we're having more growth and development and interest there, that is the purpose of the plan. So, the area of the study that we're showing here is bounded on the south by First Avenue, on the north by Fifth Avenue, on the west by the Post Falls Landing Site and Spokane Street. It goes to Idaho Street on the east, but it also includes the Idaho veneer site because there's interest in developing this going on there right now. So, our consultant will go through, look at established right-of-ways, what kind of parking can we put within those right-of-ways, how does that accommodate, how can we maximize parking and provide a more walkable, mixed-use type of an environment in the city center area? They'll also looking at maybe for opportunities whether we might want to establish some city parking lots. They'll look at the entire demand of the area, how much parking do we need for the zoning and the build-out of what we have, and then how much parking can we get on-street, and then is there additional parking that we're going to need elsewhere to accommodate parking? Part of the issue is that we've got these smaller lots within this area. As we all know, we're transitioning a lot of it from residential to a more commercial and professional mixed-use area. So, out of this, we'll have a very active public involvement process. There's three public workshops we'll have. We'll have a technical advisory committee that will include staff, a council member, probably a planning and zoning member, and some business folks that have interest in this area, as well as the general public within there. So, the outcome, they'll be looking at every street, looking at the topos that we have for the street, deciding where we're going to incorporate storm drainage with the parking and the sidewalks and the other facilities within there. So, that's just kind of the general broad vision of the scope. So, is there any other particular questions?
I guess the biggest question is, why do we need a consultant for this?
Probably because of the amount of time that it would take to fully develop this project. We've, you know, we have so much growth and demand on us right now. This allows someone to focus on a project like this, bring it to completion, and also maybe, you know, provide some outside expertise and vision that we don't quite have in-house. So, it's really just the ability to have the time and get someone to focus and create a deliverable for us.
So, we're going to pay two to three times as much per hour to have a consultant do something when, I feel like we have certainly the smarts and the ability within the city staff to do it. So, is it really a time issue, or is there some kind of, you know, professional parking engineer that we need to outsource out, or?
It's really, there are several things. One of it is a time issue. We're so focused with development, but we've also have a consultant that has done, already done some preliminary design. We're utilizing a consultant that did the work on Fourth Avenue and the adjacent side streets that we have within there. So, it's really an issue of being able to have someone that can focus, have that time, and really create the deliverables and not be pulled in a thousand different directions. And it's not like staff is going to just hand this off to a consultant. We'll work hand-in-hand in a partnership in developing the plan.
So, is this consultant going to dedicate 100% of his or her time for five months on this? Or is that person going to get pulled into directions with other projects?
Well, they will have other projects, but I doubt if they'll be as pulled in the directions that we have as we're trying to manage, you know, currently 28 active subdivisions that are under construction and dealing with the front counter and all those other issues. So, they'll also be able to focus on that public involvement process and make sure that it, you know, that it goes smooth. We're going to be working with our media center on making sure that the website is, you know, we're going to have an active website with it. So, they'll be continuing to feed that information and just really provide that dedicated effort towards this.
Even on that topic, you know, the city's got to provide the facilities and advertising for the public hearings. There's going to be city staff on that task force. There's going to be a council person on the task force. Again, I guess I'm just not seeing the value of $97,000 for parking plans.
Right. You know, when you look at the final plan on this, if we don't go through this plan, you're kind of dealing with a case-by-case basis, and you're dealing with a lot of the issues of transition into the adjoining neighborhoods without really a formal developed parking plan, without having a public involvement process. It really becomes complicated to implement things on a project, you know, project-by-project basis with this. So, it also shows a real commitment to following through on the city center plan, to folks that are interested, investors and folks that are interested in developing downtown, is showing that continued commitment on behalf of the city that we want to make this work. And parking is a big issue towards successfully, you know, creating the city center that we have down here.
I think Joe's point, I don't know.
I've got one more, if I may.
Go ahead.
Is the consultant's crystal ball clearer than the city's is as to what development may be coming in? You guys are the ones that are seeing the applications and so forth all the time in those daily conversations of what's approaching. I don't think the consultant's going to have that kind of knowledge, are they?
No, they wouldn't. And so, like I say, we're going to work on this on hand-in-hand. We're not going to just take this and hand it to a consultant and ask for a final product. I think that we've got a consultant that has done work in the community, but we also staff understands the values and the vision of city center and understands the pulse of the community and what's happening as well. So, we'll be providing a lot of feedback, as we do with any of our master plans that we implement. We don't just, we're not just handing them off. We know when the product that we need and how the project has to be managed as well. In comparison, when you look at the parking lot next to the Chamber Building, I believe we spent about $25,000 to get a full design on that. We're encompassing a much greater area. While we're not getting final design, we're getting some really great conceptual, you know, conceptual preliminary design work on that project for a much greater region. So, when we looked at it and looked at the value in comparison of dollars, it really seemed appropriate, the expenditures seemed appropriate for what they were spending on. We spent quite a bit of time going around and around looking at this and trying to see, are we, do we want to include all of these things within the scope? Do we want to eliminate some things within the scope, trying to balance that budget out, so?
I don't think, I don't mean to speak for Joe, I don't think Joe's opposed to doing it right, but I think the question is, do we have the time? Do we have the expertise that we could do this in-house and avoid having to go pay that price for an outside consultant?
Correct, and that's exactly what I'm getting at in terms of some of the value. Like you said, the consultant's not going to know the ins and outs and have as good of predictive powers as, you know, the city staff does. And so, if the city staff has to take time to get the consultant up to speed on what might be going on, you guys are already there. So, you can just go ahead and start putting in staff hours and making a plan without having to shift a bunch of information to a consultant before they can even get going. I just don't see, I don't, I'm just not seeing it, but of course, you guys are doing it every day and I'm not.
It's really a balance of workload and staffing levels and our ability to grab something like this and really focus on it and create a quality deliverable for us. We have, in my opinion, some incredibly talented staff, but it's the ability of them to really focus on a project like this and deliver it within any reasonable timeframe.
So, we've tried to find some additional staffing and have been unable to do so?
We, yeah, still have a building inspector position we've been unable to fill, and also the engineering technician position that we've been unable to fill.
Time is huge.
I have a question.
I had questions, a couple of questions on the same topic. A lot of what Joe's asking, but in addition to that, the timing of it all, it just seems like, you know, we could go out there and spend ninety-seven thousand dollars for this study, and then, you know, a tenant comes in or wants to do something with that mill site or whatever, and then all of a sudden, it's like, wow, that just can totally shift, and all of a sudden, this, all this information that we just paid almost $100,000 for is kind of like, eh, not worth, you know, it doesn't have any value now because we're premature, I guess, in going out and looking at this. There's probably not a perfect time to do this, but it seems a little premature with a lot of the other things that are on the table right now.
We felt that, a little bit to the contrary, that because we're starting to have development, and we've actually have had folks look down here and question, well, you know, what's happening with parking down here? They recognize that we have some smaller lots they want to develop on, and we have developers ask that, well, what are you doing, what are we going to do with parking? They've recognized that there's been neighborhood conflicts that we currently have, and so how are we going to deal with those neighborhood conflicts? And it's been a question that they've asked staff when they've come in and have sat down to the table with us. So, that's why we rolled it out, you know, at this stage, just really in response to the development or trying to get ahead of the curve when folks start coming in towards us, so.
Okay. The only other question I had was, with something like this that we've never seen before, it doesn't seem to fit into the consent calendar, and I don't know who puts this together. I wonder why it's not under new business where?
Well, I guess I can speak to that. This actually came before council a couple of times already, talking about the parking issues in the downtown city center area, and I'd have to go back to the exact date, but we were directed to move forward with looking at having a consultant put this plan together for us by council, and so that's why it's on the consent calendars. This isn't the first time it's come here.
This is the first time we've seen the price tag, is all right?
It's the first time you've seen the price tag on it, right. And so, it was our plan to put this together and look at grants to match some of the funds that we have to do the actual construction along First Avenue is the area that we're seeing most of that compression of parking issues. Also, we've had some discussions about the public parking lot and whether or not to fund that piece, and whether it could reside over on the Liberty Bankers area or possibly along Second Street, about a couple of blocks down. And so, having the plan put together, we can submit to the state for community development block grant funds in this downtown area. Also, it would be a piece of the urban renewal city center plan, so it would be included in that plan when we go to move forward with it.
Yeah, I'm curious.
So, would that underwrite some of the expense of having this, when you're talking about block grants and urban renewal plan?
They're going to fund the infrastructure itself, so the capital costs for the infrastructure. I don't know if this would be eligible for anything under urban renewal. My guess is not because that city center district won't be created until after this plan is complete.
Then I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead. I was going to follow up on the funding issue, but real quickly, the intent is to adopt this as an addendum to our existing city center plan that we have for the area. Once that's formally adopted, at that point, we can apply for grants and funding and seek opportunities for that. Without formal adoption, you really lose a lot of credit on your grant application, so.
Without formal adoption?
Without a formal adoption by city council of the plan, so.
That would include this.
That would include this. So, this would become an addendum to the city center plan, we'll bring it back for adoption by city council, and that, once the plan is completed. And then, at that stage, when we're seeking grant funding, your grants are really received favorable because we have a document that's been formally adopted by the city council. It's part of our large, long-range master planning efforts.
What would be the difference in time? And like Joe said, I don't do this, you do, but what would be the difference in time that it might take longer for the city to do it in-house versus hiring a consultant? And is there a deadline that you need to have this done by?
The deadline is really to be responsive to the concerns that we're having, we're hearing from businesses, and to be proactive and try to get ahead of the curve of what's going to happen here. I think if staff were going to try to take this on, it is something that would, with our current workload and the demand that we have on us with all the development that's happening, we're probably looking years in a process of this. You'd work on it, yes, to complete it. You'd work on it for a while, other things, development and growth demands are going to, would drive your attention away, then we would pick it up, and you just wouldn't be able to focus any real deliberate effort on it for any concerted time.
Linda?
Bill, I'm just wondering, I understand that we're looking for spots where we might have a parking lot, but are we also going to go along those side streets, William, Henry, Frederick, off of First, Second, Third, going up? And where the people are parking downtown now, and I just happen to live there, almost on those side street lawns of people, I mean, I know that there's some right-of-way, so are we going to be looking at that, too? Where some, like, on-street, on those side street?
Yes.
Not just Second, Third, and First, but the side streets as well?
Very similar to what we did locally here, where we maximized some parking on the side streets, and also, you know, where we put it on the major street as well, just like we did here on Fourth. So, that is the concept to formalize that. We've got to look at how we're going to transition and start providing this parking when we also currently have, you know, residential uses. We're discussing, we'll be looking at things like, you know, going out in the field and saying, where are the conflicts? What's limiting parking? We might have to cluster mailboxes, sometimes having mailboxes in a residential area that on a lot-by-lot basis can complicate parking in that area for mail delivery. And so, we're going to take a real hard look to say, how do we transition? How do we be sensitive to the existing uses that are out there, and what opportunities are there to maximize the on-street parking? So, yes, it's not just looking at individual lots. We're looking at every street that we have here, trying to formulate that parking, just to address that issue.
Thanks, Bill.
Yes.
That probably had to be longest discussion on a consent calendar. Good comments, thank you all very much. Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've got a question for?
I've got one more.
Go ahead.
Different item?
Same item.
Oh, go ahead.
Pardon, Mr. Wilson, would it be appropriate to pull item D from the consent calendar and put it in new business to vote on it on its own, or can we cherry pick out of the consent calendar and put an eye on the rest of it?
If the council wants to remove that from the consent calendar, put it on another item, that's appropriate.
If you want to vote against it, you can, on the consent calendar, you can vote against it as well.
If you'd like to pull it off, that's up to the council. You'd have to make a motion and a vote to pull it off and put it elsewhere on the agenda.
We've discussed it enough, I can probably just cherry pick it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next question I have is on item F. I don't know if it's John or Andrew, another consultant fee. And this is on the wastewater system, but I believe, you know, we spent a lot of money for consultants and et cetera to get the treatment plant to where it is right now. And it's my understanding that this expenditure that you're requesting is for the collection system, so it's to do a, the study and recommendation on the collection system, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
So, it's not a duplication of anything we've done to date?
That would be a slight overstatement. There is an existing collection system master plan. That plan was last updated in, I believe it was 2012, by city staff, and prior to that, it was written by JUB five or six years prior to that, so around 2005, 2006.
With the huge changes that we've made to the plan, the requirements coming forth from, that have come forth from EPA, time to do the official update?
I think it's worth putting a little bit of context around what this update would actually be. So, as you mentioned originally, the collection system is largely separate from the treatment plant. Think of it as basically the funnel that brings all of the wastewater from the city to that treatment plant. So, the plan that I'm referring to is a completely separate plan from the facility plan that tells us what treatment upgrades we need to make at the wastewater facility. So, I would say, as a result of the growth we've seen over the last five and 10 years, as our city has expanded outward, our assumptions need to be updated in order to correctly build the right pipes and the right lift stations if we wind up needing those, so that we don't come back in five years and say, oh, I wish we would have thought about where this subdivision might go. It needs a lift station also now. So, the goals of this project would be to build the correct infrastructure as we grow outward, and then also to review all of our existing collection system infrastructure, update our current knowledge on that system, and include in our update, or in our capital plan, any needed replacement projects. So, we have some lift stations that are 20, 30 years old that might need upgrading.
Okay. Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
Any other questions on the consent? If not, it'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Phyllis, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye on all issues other than D. I vote nay on D.
Malloy?
Aye on all items except for D, I vote nay.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Will Ham?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item, we have two public hearings. First is the Riverview Addition Zone Change. Tavis, now let me open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, councilors, Tavis Schmidt, Associate Planner with City of Post Falls. I'm presenting the Riverview Addition Zone Change, case file number ZC-17-03. The owners are David and Jeff Malloy, and the applicants Tri-State Consulting Engineers. The requested action this evening is city council is being asked to review the proposed zone change from industrial to high-density multifamily residential R3 zoning. The project is located here in the red crosshatching. It is directly west of the Post Falls Post Office, some vacant lots. It's along Quarterlane Avenue, and it kind of tees in with Scott Street there. So, it's about 820 feet west of the intersection of East Quarterlane Avenue and North Greens Ferry Road. The property is approximately 1 and 3/4 acres. Currently, it's vacant, and water and sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls upon development. This map shows the existing zoning, so the dark crosshatching here is the subject property, and it is actually, it's a light gray property under there, it's the same as the Post Office property, it's zoned industrial. The dark gray is a heavy industrial, and these different shades of yellow are medium and multifamily residential, medium and high-density residential. The brighter yellow we see kind of down in this area is single-family residential. The red is community commercial services, it's our main commercial zoning district. City staff and the Public Services Department have reviewed the proposal, found it to be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The proposal is consistent with the future land use map, and I'll actually show that on the next slide. The proposed zoning is compatible with surrounding environment, there's a lot of multifamily residential in the immediate area, and it's compatible with the adjoining street classifications, with Quarterlane Avenue being classified as local roadway and Greens Ferry as a minor arterial. On this slide, this shows the comprehensive plan or future land use designations. So, the yellow is residential, and this property is in the black crosshatching here, and it's yellow underneath it. So, approving this zone change would bring this in conformance with the future land use designation. The purple is industrial, and the red is commercial. Within the comprehensive plan and the municipal code, there's some zone change review criteria. And with that, zoning is assigned following consideration of items like street classification, traffic patterns, existing and future development, and any community plans, and then natural or geographic features in the area. So, with that, commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with a higher road classification, and limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential is assigned for properties that proceed farther away from the higher-intensity urban activities. Regarding transportation, staff commented that the change from industrial to high-density multifamily residential would not have a significant change in findings or recommendations within the City of Post Falls transportation master plan. Regarding water reclamation, existing sewer infrastructure is located adjacent to the property, and the proposed zone change is not anticipated to have any impacts to the city's water reclamation system. Regarding domestic water, existing water infrastructure is located adjacent to the property, and the proposed zone change is not anticipated to have any significant impacts to the city's water system. We received no comments from any outside agencies. This slide is just the zoning criteria, the zone change review criteria, just all in one slide for any review or questions, comments. So, this time, I'll stand for any questions that you would have.
Now? What's the density? Now, what's the density you can put on there with R3?
The R3, so if it was at, if it was apartments, it would be around 18 units per acre. And then if it was like townhouses, it would be down, down from there. But typically, in R3 in the city, we've seen 12 to 18 units per acre, depending on the housing type that they were put there.
So 1.77 gives us about 30 units on that property?
Approximately, I have to take out some because there's going to be, like swales would be needed, parking, ADA access, some setbacks. So maximum, your numbers would be max if it was a perfectly ideal situation.
Okay. Any other questions, Tavis? Does the applicant wish to speak? Mr. Circle? Name for the record, please. Excuse me, before you start, Steve, if anybody wishes to testify on this for the next public hearing, I neglected to announce reforms on the Diaz in the back. Fill him out and turn him in to Phyllis, and we will give you an opportunity. Circle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Steve Circle with Tri-State Consulting Engineers. Good evening. And we've read through, and we, of course, we, we met with P and Z and went through this application. We think it's a good fit for the city to change the zoning as proposed. And I know I've worked with the property owners, and we've also worked with requiring the piece of the property to the west. Right now, the, the black rectangular piece you see there that's hatched, the Malloy family have owned the piece to the east, but there's actually two parcels there. They purchased the other parcel recently that, that backs up against the multifamily that's right there on Quarterlane Avenue to make it a unified piece. So hopefully tonight, we get a blessing from you guys that we can move forward. And they do want to do multifamily, they do want, they do want to do apartments. They want to have all the parking, everything onsite. Staff report did, did mention a few property owners that were concerned about what the parking is going to be because the parking is pretty congested on Quarterlane Avenue west of the parcel. And so they're, 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 they see that, they're interested in that, they're concerned about that. So we want to do fully self-sustaining development that has parking onsite. So stand for any questions you may have.
Are you required to have parking onsite? Is that part of the, if you have 25 units there, do you have to have 50 car parks for those 25?
Well, there is a parking, there is, in your code, there is a parking requirement. So with what we're planning on doing, we're not doing the same thing as the development to the west, which is there, I believe those are duplexes and all multi, you know, all rentals. So we will have, we will comply with the parking requirements, and there will be onsite. We're thinking maybe, maybe two, maybe three apartment complexes that have onsite parking there onsite, not, not inundating Quarterlane Avenue more than it already has.
Great. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Fellas, anyone wishing to speak?
Not on this.
Nobody? No rebuttal, I'm sure. With that, I will, I would assume, no rebuttal?
I'm thinking that's okay.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Counsel, deliberation.
Just a clarification. I do share a last name with the owners. If they are related, I'm not aware of it. So it's either a different branch of the same tree or a different tree altogether. So.
Thank you, Joe.
I do have a question for Tavis. Just to follow up on that parking issue.
Yes.
So are they, how much, how many car parks are they, would they be required to put on that property?
With multifamily development, it's based on the number of bedrooms. And so I believe one bedrooms, it's one parking space per one-bedroom unit. When you get to two bedrooms, it's one and a half, two bedrooms and up. It's one and a half per unit. And they're, they're welcome to provide more, but that's the city's minimum requirements.
I guess my concern there is that the, the letters that came in and were addressed during planning and zoning were about parking. I understand that the developer wants to put parking on the property, but they're not, you know, there's a limit or?
The city will require a minimum parking. So if they're having two-bedroom and up units, it's going to be a minimum of one and a half parking stalls per unit.
But it could still spill over onto Quarterlane Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Is Quarterlane Avenue wider at that spot than to the west? Or is it considered the whole way?
Yeah. It's, it's, it definitely is driving down. It's wider along there. And I, honestly, I don't know if it's because that this parcel's vacant and it hasn't been developed, so with the right-of-way. But I know it does kind of get constricted down when you get along further west in Quarterlane where there's those duplexes.
You're not sure if it's going to maintain that width?
No.
Okay.
Excuse me, we got further explanation.
We got the road expert here.
The road expert. Oh, Mayor and Counsel Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. The road in that area is wider than to the west where the duplexes are. To the west, the duplexes have a 32-foot road width, which is the same road width we use in any of our typical single-family residential neighborhoods. Over by the post office, it's about 36 feet wide, 36-foot wide road. What we were looking at was including that 36-foot wide width, pushing it through this development, and then transitioning to narrow it down to the 32 feet as close as we could and still meet the requirements for road, good road construction. We do recognize that a little extra width in that section of road would be beneficial to emergency services as well as the general public traveling through there.
Okay. Thanks, Rob.
Any motion to come forward?
I would move to approve Riverview addition zone change, final number ZC-17-03.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Fellas, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up, another public hearing, the Guy Road vacation. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Manley.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of city council. So the Guy Road vacation, case file VAC-17-02. The applicant is the City of Post Falls, and the City of Post Falls currently owning that right-of-way. The requested action is to review and approve the requested vacation for a portion of Guy Road. The general location is as you see here. It's, it's fairly small, but it's this red hashed, you see the two polygons there. It's west of Spokane Street and east of Chase Road and just north of Grange. You can see here, this is a, a little bit better detail of the requested exhibit. Now, I do want to add some clarity. The, part of the notice, and this is actually kind of funny. Originally, we had noticed just the north section, and we perceived an oversight, and then we re-noticed it, so that way we can include the southern section, of which then we found out that an area that we had originally identified as part of snow removal storage, we lost as a city. And then it necessitated actually the need to retain this southern portion. So in communicating with Warren, I asked, I go, well, now we've notified these two polygons. We want to go back to the one. Is there an issue? He said, no, there's not an issue because we're reducing the net sum of the request. So long story short, the real request is to just vacate the area north of this, the railroad right-of-way that you see here, and not the southern. So that's what the modification of the request this evening is. So in review of this, the planning division saw no issue with what was proposed, and we did find that the ultimate result would be a safer environment, and I'll go into that in just a bit. Engineering division found that it would be consistent with the Whiskey Flats subdivision approved just to the west, and that the ultimate development would correspond with the city's transportation master plan, and as well, this would provide a safer environment. So with the Whiskey Flats to the west, and in coordination, the intent is to remove one of these railway, railroad crossings, of which then residents would then, this area would then go through Whiskey Flats and would then come out on the west side of Grange Avenue. Or they could go north to Fisher. Of likelihood, because Whiskey Flats is going to be improved, most residents will probably want to go down through the improved roadway to the west. Until such time, Fisher's improved on the east. Now, the particulars with, if there's any questions with the rail crossing and the timing of that, I do have Rob Paulus here this evening. He can answer those questions as well. But with what I've presented to you with this vacation, do you have any?
Any questions, John, at this point?
I guess I got just a question, John. Again, if I look at the area between Guy Road and Whiskey Flats, I mean, we're thinking, what is that? Lot, yeah, Lot 8, Block 2, whatever there. I mean, that's going to develop. Are we expecting all of the traffic from that development to funnel through Whiskey Flats out onto Grange and Chase?
Well, at such time, you have, like to the east, you have this vacant land here as it develops.
Yeah.
More than likely, when they go to Guy, once Fisher's improved, I mean, Guy Road's improved, they more than likely would go to Fisher and head west, just because it's a straight shot to Chase after that point. It's possible that some may go through the Whiskey Flats, but I would see that as unlikely. Now, the Whiskey Flats residents, though, probably will use their interior road section to get out to Grange to get to Chase.
I guess my question really comes down to, I mean, it makes sense to vacate this, get it straight away from the railroad, but it seems like there's a tremendous amount of property there that's, that funnels, that could use that Guy Road to Grange process, if you will, whereas there isn't really a very good flow of traffic out of that area without it.
Well, I could have Rob Paulus to come out and talk about it, too. But I do know that Fisher Avenue running east-west connects right to the north. Most of that development, and I apologize for not having a, more of an aerial image to go along with that, that would kind of help clarify this matter. But to the, the northeast, they could funnel onto Fisher and head west to Chase Road.
But if they're going the other direction, right now, they can just go south to Grange and, what is that, east to Spokane Street?
I'll have Rob come up and-
Okay. We didn't, yeah.
This gives a little bit better view of the, the general area. You have the Greenside Vista subdivision up here. This is Whiskey Flats. Right now, they do have a connection point at this intersection with Grange Avenue. As this area continues to develop in the second phase of Whiskey Flats goes in, the connection of Tennessee Avenue here is going to connect over to Guy Road. Our street department has opened up the connection point over here between Guy Road and Fisher Avenue. We really anticipate that most of the traffic from this subdivision will continue utilizing and coming, come out to Grange Avenue and utilize Grange Avenue. A second access point was required with the second phase of Whiskey Flats to meet fire code requirements. When you look at Greenside Vista's, they have a connection point to Spokane Street over here, a connection point to, from Fisher Avenue to Chase about in this area. And as this undeveloped area transitions to residential over time is what we anticipate it to do, you'll see the internal roadways from Whiskey Flats, this one here, head to the north. This area and here will probably have road connections to Fisher Avenue, possibly to Grange. But we do see that there is sufficient connection points from this area without the crossing of Guy Road and the railroad. That was what was reviewed also with the Whiskey Flats subdivision and approved.
I'm just curious, like, that whole property that's, east, yeah, that area in there, east of Guy Road, how do they get to Spokane Street? Are they all just forced to go out to Chase and then south?
They would, they would be going to Guy Road, up to Fisher, and going through Greens, Greenside Vista's.
So winding through a subdivision?
What was that?
Winding through?
Yeah, winding through that subdivision.
Spokane. Okay.
It's, you're taking an area which is surrounded, it's basically a county island surrounded by city residential subdivision. And as that subdivision fills in, it'll make a network of roads. If you had developed the whole thing at once, you would still have a limited number of access points. The railroad is, is a physical barrier that you're limited in the number of crossings. And also, the more crossings that you have with a railroad, regardless of whether or not they're gated and lighted or just stop controlled, the more crossings you have, the more likely you, more, the higher the likelihood you have of serious fatalities. The best way to handle road and railroad crossings is to have grade separation, but we're not going to see that here. That's why ITD with their grant is putting in signalized crossing on Spokane Street, and we're seeing the signalized crossing going in on Grange Avenue. Part of the compromise in that was in getting rid of the Guy Road crossing, that helped with the overall safety of the area as it continues to develop, creates more road traffic. But now we got that road traffic going to, to defined spots where we have gated and safer crossing points.
Okay.
Fisher Road ends at the east at Guy Road. Is that correct? It's kind of hard to tell on my map here.
Yes, it does. It is a T-intersection, and then Guy Road heads north.
So that's still Guy Road that's going up through the subdivision?
Yeah. Guy, Guy Road comes up, and then here at Ashworth, that's now, that would then be the main road to head out to Spokane Street. The Guy Road and Fisher Road intersection is a stop-controlled intersection at present. Ashworth and Guy Road is also a stop-controlled intersection.
So at Guy Road, and I haven't driven up there in recent months, to open Guy Road to the north where there are just cement blocks moved?
We moved cement blocks, and then also our street department put a, a significant amount of gravel in there to make sure that the grade was appropriate for traffic getting back and forth on there. Most of it was for the convenience of the present property owners on, on Guy Road, thinking from the standpoint that Whiskey Flats wasn't connected in at this time, and also thinking that the railroad, railroad would be a little bit further ahead on their schedule. We were anticipating them doing work in October of this year. I was informed Friday by ITD that the railroad has had a little bit of delays, and they're anticipating their work to happen about December of this year now. Part of the Whiskey Flats subdivision requirement was that they were going to be opening up the Guy Road connection anyway. They also have a requirement that in addition to them paving Tennessee Avenue to Guy Road, and then Guy Road to the city limits, which would be right there, they're also required to pave a small portion of the intersection here to improve the intersection safety, and also to reduce how much rock is tracked out onto the city streets to reduce some of our maintenance.
Well, that was, that was answered. My other question is, just putting gravel down there really wasn't a long-term?
Long-term, no. It's kind of a compromise of looking that you've got the county area, the section that's in the county, it's dirt, gravel, kind of a mix on that. It's designed for low speeds. It's not intended for 25 mile-per-hour traffic. And as that area transitions from county into the city, and then into single-family residential or some other land use, if it gets reclassified, we'll see Guy Road develop as development occurs and become a typical local residential street.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
You're welcome.
And since we're the applicant, that would be our report. Any wishing to testify? Thank you. Wishing to speak? John, is it Penninger?
Penninger.
Penninger. And you do not say on this if you're in favor and opposition or neutral?
My name's John Penninger. I live on Fisher Road. Object to this opening of the north end of Guy Road. It was, been closed for- It was, been closed for the eight years that I lived there. They did have a little trail going through there for the local people that lived there could come out onto Fisher and that. If you check the maps and stuff, you'll see that Fisher Road is only half the size of the rest of the streets in the area that go through the subdivision. This has been come, when people come out of division, kind of overdo it, they go pretty fast along there. And the added traffic, the road is narrow, when there's people parked on the streets, two large trucks can't pass each other right at the same time with a car parked there. It's a, a safety issue with kids playing in the area with the added traffic. We saw no, what the impact would be from anything of that. When they opened, when we had the meeting three weeks ago scheduled, they delayed it, but the city came in last week, and without any notice to anybody, opened Guy Road. They had six, seven trucks, 15, 20 people, and they did it one day. They put a stop sign at the end of Guy Road coming onto Fisher, but going the other direction, safety didn't mean anything because you come to the train crossing now, there is no stop sign there. The people that live there know this, and they, they stop and they check and everything, but people coming through there now go pretty fast, and if you had somebody watching, you'd see that there's quite a few, just do a quick glance and they, they go across. The other issue is, the road now has been opened from Whiskey Flats onto Guy Road. Had they not opened that end, they would be going out the other way. Now, they started their development already and got, in Whiskey Flats now for the second part, and that traffic comes out that way, they don't want to take the big trucks and everything, keep going through there once they get their division finished, so they'd be all coming out that direction. If they close the railroad, they're all going to come out onto Fisher and go through Guy Road to Answorth, or Ashworth. And to me, it's quite a hazard, and I, I don't know who ordered the road opened, but it'd been closed this year by the city quite a few years ago. And so, no reason was given us when they were going to open it or have a chance for hearing to, to tell the people what was going to happen. Mr. Strong is here from the subdivision, he's the president of our HOH, and he'll have a lot more to say. But I am a resident, three houses down from Guy Road there, and the road itself is gravel. The dust and stuff will be quite sufficient for the area, the people traveling, because they don't oil it, they don't do anything. Mr. Guy, he puts oil down in front of his place, but the other end of it isn't, so. And on Fisher itself, the city won't allow speed limit signs, or they won't allow no parking on the, on the farm side of the street, so all this becomes an issue of safety. And with the added traffic, nobody said how much more traffic there's going to be, because if the west side of Guy Road is developed, which it's up for sale, and I know it's just a matter of time before it sells, there's going to be all that traffic, too. And that, that ends into another big deal.
Your time, time is, thank you very much. And if, just anyone wishing to testify, it is a four-minute limit, and there's a clock right here so you can watch. Next person, thank you, sir, for your comments. Next person wishing to testify, Larry Guy, in opposition.
I'm Larry Guy, I live at 110 West Grange Avenue, and I own the 12 and 1/2 acres that's east of Guy Road, and it is all up for sale right now, waiting on somebody to buy. The thing that I'm, just found out here just now, is this road hasn't been vacated yet, but they've already scheduled to have the railroad crossing taken out. How can they take out a railroad crossing when the street isn't even abandoned? Why is an engineer capable of giving away a road to the property owners and you guys just have to go along with it? There's a couple of the council members here that were spoken to out of chamber that are against this to be done, but they say they're just one marble in a bag and they can't do nothing about it. Well, that's not the way to run the city government, if you let one engineer tell everybody that this is a cut-and-dry deal. That road goes, the railroad crossing goes whether the road doesn't go, okay? When you had, when you guys extended Grange Avenue down on Chase, your fire chief showed up and give a little speech on how good the response time was going to be opening up Grange Road. You close that railroad crossing, and you just added three to four minutes onto response time for anybody that lives on Guy Road. There's going to be 50-some more houses go in on my field, and they're going to stand there and watch their house burn as the fire truck goes down Spokane Street to Ashworth and comes back up. The Post Falls Highway District, they're the only one out of the four people that you guys put in your letter saying that you give them a thumbs up for everything done. We talked to the people on the different entities, and they didn't know that there was 50 more houses going in, and Post Falls Highway District was the only one that wants this taken out, everybody else. I talked to the Idaho Transportation Department last summer, when they were out surveying the crossings, and he stood right there and told me that they were putting gated signs at Grange, Guy, and Spokane Street, and it was going to be done this summer. And then, all of a sudden, it comes up that Guy Road, you just, you're just going to add on more response time, it's going to be, if you take today's market, just like you said, most houses are a two-car family. If you take the news, the second division of Whiskey Flats, and you take my division, and you've got, 90% of the people are working in Spokane, they're going to hit Spokane Street to go to the freeway. They're not going to go out Chase and have to zigzag all around, either out to Pleasant View or back into town. They're going to go out to get on Spokane Street. You're going to have 100 cars extra sometime during the day that's going to be going out that way, and that's going to turn Ashworth into a thoroughfare, and then people didn't buy in that subdivision to have a main street, that these people are going to be going to work in the morning, and they're not going to be doing 25 mile an hour when they go up there. And I'm against open, closing down Guy Road, and I wish you guys would reconsider this and stop it now and leave it, so everybody can have a way of getting out and not plug up some other housing development, just on account of one railroad crossing that the Transportation Department already said that they would put the crossing arms in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Next person wishing to speak in opposition, William Guy.
Yeah, my name is William Guy, and I'm dead-set against this closing of our road. We've lived there since '55 on that property, and Guy Road was needed when we moved there, and it's going to be needed a lot more. You people figure your city's going to grow to 90,000 people someday, and you shouldn't be taking out roads that are needed to move this traffic. These subdivisions are designed with their narrow streets to carry the traffic of that subdivision. Now, Whiskey Flats, when they designed that, they designed it for the traffic of that subdivision. And the people, I've been going out there, door-to-door, knocking on the doors, talking to these homeowners, there's five new people living in Whiskey Flats, and they're all assuming that part of that east side of Whiskey Flats is going to exit out onto Guy Road and come over to Grange and go to Post Falls. They don't realize that Melvin and his buddy here are trying to close Guy Road, so that won't happen. Those people on that east half of Whiskey Flats are all going to have to go out through the west half of Whiskey Flats, or else go north to Fisher, which, if they're going to go to Post Falls, they're not going to go north, they're going to go through Whiskey Flats. And I went through there last night, talking to people, and with a car parked on each side of the road, those streets are not made to carry all the traffic from Larry's property when it gets developed, because most of the people working in Spokane are going to want to go through Whiskey Flats and go to town, where, right now, we got Guy Road, a direct route right out of the center of all of the Guy family property, which would be the logical exit for the people from the east side of Whiskey Flats and from Larry's property. Just go right south on Guy Road to Grange and go to Spokane Street, or to Chase, whichever they choose. Then, on the other hand, if they have to go out through Ashworth, Ashworth, you get down there to the one end, it's got a, one of them parked thing dividers in the middle, it's one lane on each side, and it's not going to be designed to carry all this extra traffic either. When the sensible thing is to just leave Guy Road alone, it's a safe crossing, it's got good views both ways, and I went out and talked to the Idaho Highway Department, I've been there twice, talking to their engineers. The first time I walked in there, when I told them what I was there for, they threw up their arms and said, "Don't blame us for that, Post Falls City is doing that." But then I talked to a couple of Post Falls City Council members, they knew nothing about it. Melvin and his crew were shoving this thing through under the table, they never enlightened any of the people on the prairie that it's going to affect, and from what I gather, they never enlightened you people either. They had it in the oven and baked before I brought it to the council's attention, and two members looked into it, and one of them come, told my, to my house and told me, "Yes, they are going to try and rip out your road." But I went to the high, the state police, and they say, "We have nothing to do with it." We went to the meeting, and we're in on the gated crossing and stuff, but we had nothing to do with the Guy Road. And the lieutenant that I talked to at the Idaho State Police told me that he agreed with me that taking out Guy Road was going to be a big inconvenience for us and a hazard for our safety, fire protection, and ambulance service.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, this is far too important a thing to settle in four minutes, that's for sure.
Next person wishing to speak in opposition is Gary Strong.
Mayor Jacobson, members of the council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name's Gary Strong, I happen to be the president of the Greenside Vista's Homeowners Association. I represent 148 homes in that subdivision. Our Board of Directors passed a resolution on September 12th when we heard about what was going on here, and directed me to come and address you in order to put forth our objections and to itemize the impact that the Guy Road vacation would have on our subdivision. In the board's opinion, our board, and that of many of the residents who could be affected by the discretionary action, and we recognize that, it is discretionary action on the part of the council, over which you have jurisdiction, the contemplated vacation and closure of the southern extremity of Guy Road will obligate residents of our subdivision to bear the brunt of additional traffic originating out of the Viking construction development of Whiskey Flats and on the property previously owned by members of the Guy family. The HOA Board could find no evidence of any impact study being ordered by the city council or conducted by the Community Development Division of the Post Falls Public Service Department. In short, the residents were not proactively given the opportunity to voice their opinion on the proposed closure. Here are our concerns, and this is what we see coming. Residents of Whiskey Flats wishing to travel east are likely to exit their subdivision via Tennessee Avenue, turn onto Guy Road, cross Fisher, and turn east on Ashworth in order to access Spokane Street, which is the eastern boundary of our subdivision, or they could turn west on Fisher to access Chase Road on the western boundary of Greenside Vista's. In either case, it adds unwanted and unnecessary traffic through our residential community. At present, Phase 1 of Whiskey Flats has 37 homes. With the additional property that surrounds us, we see eventually more than 100 to 150 residences going in on the properties that have already been sold or are up for sale for future development. That is going to put an unnecessary burden on our subdivision. Fourth, or third, next, I'm sorry, you need to consider that much of the traffic is the result of vacating the juncture of North Guy Road where it joins Grange Avenue. The homeowners of Greenside Vista hope that the council will appreciate our concerns and understand that we do not want to be the vehicular relief valve for subdivisions being developed all around us. Ingress and egress into future subdivisions and development should be accessed by means of larger thoroughfares like Chase and Grange, not on residential streets like Guy Road and Ashworth. Mayor Jacobson, members of the council, members of our homeowners association, and I appreciate you letting us at least voice our concerns here with the proposal, and we are dead-set against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Rebuttal?
Just wanted to add some clarity. The, there's a difference between the vacation and a guy being closed or not. With the approval and the public hearing process with Viking, with that project with Whiskey Flats, it was determined to close that road. So, really, is how is the resultant going to be? Is it going to remain closed and blockaded and not vacated, or vacated and then integrated into the adjacent properties? So, that's really what we're looking at right now, is not whether or not there's going to be access through there, it's just whether or not it's going to be vacated or not. And so, there's, just wanted to make that part of it clear. Also, when you look at Ashworth, when this subdivision went in to begin with, this whole area is looked at, and, and the road connectivity, as you see here, Ashworth's land continued to the west, and so, that there is a residential collector. So, therefore, it was designed to incur some of the planned growth. It wasn't planned for these to be in county islands for perpetuity, that eventually you would get some comparable residential development adjacent to it, and then the collector, residential collectors would feed it to more of your major collectors or arterials, hence the Spokane Street or Chase. I just wanted to add that for a little bit more clarity on, on the matter.
John, question for you. When the gentleman said Fisher, I believe it was Fisher Road is not as wide, will that be, is, was, is the plan that is a property to the south develops, that road will be expanded?
Correct.
So, it will be a, it will be a standard width road once development takes place?
This would be true.
Linda?
Well, so, John, that being said, you never expected all of this prop, or all of these cars to travel north and catch Ashworth to go to Spokane Street? Because that's what it does look like is going to happen.
Uh-huh.
And I understand that Ashworth is a larger residential street, you can see that by the, with the map, but for another, the houses that are there in Whiskey Flats, the second phase that's coming in, and another, and I, I foresee that being more than 150 houses on that, on that county island, to all go north and go out Ashworth to catch Spokane Street?
Well, Rob stood up here, so I'll let him go ahead and respond to that, since he was, he was here during this time, I wasn't, so I'll let him.
One thing to remember is, or actually, I didn't even point it out before, but with the Whiskey Flats subdivision, you have the main access point here. the Whiskey Flats subdivision, you have the main access point here. Phase Two builds a road at this point and a cul-de-sac over here. Phase Three of the subdivision takes this road and punches it out to Grange Avenue as well. So you are from this area going to have two access points onto Grange Avenue. What happens in this area, you can speculate a little bit. Our code does allow for the development of additional roads to access onto Chase, depending upon what the spacing is. But you will have, as the area develops, more than one access point onto Grange, but both of them will be on the west side of the railroad tracks. Typical residential street can handle in excess of 1,000 vehicle trips per day. Most people are comfortable with a residential street more around the range of about 800. They start complaining when traffic gets up around 1,000 trips per day. You look at the subdivision to the south of this area, where is the mouse? You have railroad, it's almost a flip of this side, with the railroad blocking any access, no access across the railroad, one access point here, and a couple access points onto Chase. A significant amount of homes, but they're able to handle a limited number of access points onto the surrounding road system. The subdivision and development of that area from our master plan didn't show that there was a need for any large additional collector or arterial roadways from internal to that subdivision. The access points that we have would meet our code and should serve that subdivision well. Again, we were moving forward based originally from a diagnostic review, which was done with state police, city of Post Falls Engineering, Idaho Transportation Department, and looking at the safety issues along that railroad corridor through the entire city of Post Falls. Things that were identified was updating and putting in gates on Prairie Avenue, those were put in, putting in gates at Spokane Street, those are in the process of being done within the next 90 days, putting in gates at Grange Avenue, they're moving forward on that, and part of the caveat on that was to get rid of the crossing at Guy Road. That was shown in the Whiskey Flats subdivision, and it was heard at public testimony. We haven't done anything which was behind closed doors or without trying to inform the public. We did send out letters to the residents along Guy Road in the county area back in June to let them know that we were going to be opening up the Guy Road connection at Fisher Avenue and giving them an update at that time as to where the railroad crossing was at.
Thank you, Rob.
Can I ask Rob a question?
Sure.
If you may sit down. Rob, a lot of times, we have seen traffic plans that were drawn, overlay these county pockets and stuff like that. Is there a traffic plan for that pocket?
Going back before Whiskey Flats, there was a little bit of a traffic plan that showed a couple of connection points going through Mr. Bill Guy's property as to how a road might go through there. The reason for that, at that time, a subdivision had been proposed called the Guy subdivision, and that was, would have been the east half of what is now the Whiskey Flats subdivision. They needed a route to get to the sanitary sewer lift station, so they showed, "Well, here's where a road alignment could go, so we can thread a sanitary sewer line to get to the lift station." That is no longer needed because sanitary sewer, they found a different route that could make the subdivision work. We know that there's some potential routes through Mr. Guy's property to the north, but how they develop is going to be based upon what a developer comes in with and what they want to lay out. Staff's involvement in the development of any subdivisions in that area would be trying to look at interconnectivity between those subdivisions to give traffic a few alternate routes to circulate between them, both for vehicles as well as pedestrians to get around. There's a park up in Greenside Vista's, and then also to make sure that we're providing access to the arterial and collector roadways and that we're not creating a traffic problem inside those subdivisions or on the arterials or collectors.
So along that same line as Fisher, expected to extend to Spokane Street, my biggest concern with this whole thing is the mobility of anybody in that whole county pocket to get to Spokane Street. So either can they go north on Guy and then east on Fisher, I mean eventually, or can there be a jog built in to bypass the crossing at Guy Road and Grange?
We did not anticipate Fisher Avenue extending to the east. We anticipated Fisher Avenue as being developed ultimately, internally, we call it a residential collector street. Instead of 32 feet wide, it'd be 36 feet wide, just a little bit wider, gives a little bit better access and allows for the combination of 25 mile per hour traffic and parked cars and a little bit higher volumes. But we did not see that going through. We did anticipate, you know, there's the discussion, where is traffic going to go? How are they going to get from point A to point B? A larger majority of our population does tend to travel to the west to go to Spokane for their jobs. Our modeling, we saw that more of that traffic would tend to lean towards Chase Road. Chase Road gives a good connection down to Seltice Way and access to Spokane Street if you want to get onto the interchange there. Seltice Way also gives you access out to Pleasant View Road to get to the interchange at that location. You also have the opportunity from this area to take Chase up to Prairie Avenue, Prairie Avenue being a higher speed roadway, and taking that out to Pleasant View, and then going to Highway 53 or back down to I-90 and then heading west.
No, unfortunately.
I have a couple questions, because this has kind of been mentioned a little bit in a roundabout way, and I just want to make sure I have this correct. Is it a condition of Whiskey Flats subdivision to close Guy Road?
The Whiskey Flats subdivision showed that the road would be closed.
Okay, so, so as the council and the planning commission, we voted on that subdivision and Guy Road was going to be closed?
That is correct.
Okay, and then the other question is, you mentioned that to have the railroad crossing at Grange and at Spokane Street, it was understood by who that this crossing was going to be closed? The railroad?
It was understood by staff as we were moving forward on getting signalization of these intersections, that getting a signal on Grange Avenue, that because of the safety concerns, part in talking with the railroad, that with those safety concerns, getting rid of that one crossing helps a lot more in justifying putting in the gates and arms at the other. Because of the Grange and Guy being so close together, a very sharp angle as to how the railroad crosses at that location, you've got over nine trains a day that go through that area, and they're at 40 miles per hour average speed. It is considered to be a unsafe situation to have those crossings so close together.
And so, again, is it a condition to have those crossings put at Spokane Street and Grange is the condition to close Guy Road? I mean, I'm just talking kind of, and maybe the legal counsel can help out here, because it sounds like it's being inferred that it is...
City staff did not require and make it a condition that the crossing be closed. It's a little bit more complicated than just that, Councilman Wilhelm. When the subdivision started over 10 years ago at being looked at being developed in this area, you had some of the issues of, in order for those subdivisions to go in, the rail crossings had to be upgraded and had to be made safe. One of the issues that came up was in making them safe, putting in gates and arms at both of them. Can that be done? Yes, it can. What is the cost of doing that? In excess of half a million dollars. Okay, is that a lot of money or not a lot of money? Depends who's going to foot the bill and wants to carry that. With the Guy subdivision, there was discussion as far as they can't afford to put in two rail crossings. Is there another route to provide access to the subdivision of that land without having two rail crossings? Yes, there was. They could make a second access up to Fisher Avenue and then have a primary access onto Grange, upgrade just one rail crossing and close the other. That was potential. There was some talk with the railroad and saying, is this something that the railroad could be done? Because there was a condition that the development of the Guy Road subdivision had to make the railroad happy with the conditions of the rail crossings. It then developed, we've had, I've been on three diagnostic reviews with the Idaho Transportation Department and UP Railroad, state police have been involved in that and Post Falls Highway District. In all of those reviews, we've looked at those, taken a look at the collision history in these areas. Guy Road does not have a collision history on it, possibly because it's a local access only. You have about six residences out there, Bill? Thank you. But as you increase the traffic on it, you will increase the likelihood of someone running a stop sign if you don't have it gated. You know, you could go in there and put gates and arms on both. Is that going to be the safest thing in the world? Can't guarantee that. But it was the best route that staff saw and working with other departments and also with the development in the area to provide the safest access without hampering the overall transportation network. There was some discussion about closing this would impact safety access. I did have a discussion with Gerald Archer about a month ago on this, because the issue had come up with the rail crossing on the other side and how connecting Grange to Chase improved emergency services access. And the fire marshal, Gerald Archer, said that the closing of this access does not materially impact emergency service access to Greens Ferry Landing, Whiskey Flats, or the residents on Guy Road.
You done, Linda? Carrie?
Is Guy Road a city road?
Guy Road is a city road from this black line here down to Grange Avenue and from this black line here to the north. This piece here, which is about 660 feet, is in the county, it is a public right-of-way, but it is not fully accepted for maintenance by a public entity.
Who plows it?
I'm not sure.
So what if?
Excuse me. Go ahead.
What if it wasn't vacated?
If this section of road was not vacated, what would happen is that when the, either, we would have our street department now, or in the near future, or when the railroad comes in to put in the gates and arms on Grange Avenue and remove the planking from Guy Road, we would barricade both sides of it so that people could not cross at that location.
So you would vacate, the city would vacate it?
Well...
Even if it wasn't vacated? You couldn't cross it?
Vacation is a process of getting rid of your legal ownership and rights to that property. The city of Post Falls does not have a legal right and ownership within 100-foot width, which is the railroad right-of-way. That's the railroad's property. And that's what was, the determination was to close that crossing. We can continue ownership of our road right-of-way on either side of the railroad's right-of-way, but with the approval of the subdivision of Whiskey Flats, it didn't seem to make much sense with the railroad crossing being gone to keep ownership of the right-of-way.
So there goes right to, I think that's the point. The railroad is going to remove the public's ability to cross the tracks at Guy Road?
That is correct. That has been in process for over a year, and as of middle of July, the railroad had ordered all of the parts and equipment to put these crossings in place and to do the work that's been scheduled through a state grant, and they're now about 90 days out from construction. Later than we had hoped, but...
So what would the advantage be of vacating, if that's going to happen anyways?
In vacating the road, the rights of way end up getting dissolved and separated into the two adjoining landowners. The Copper Basin subdivision, which Viking Estates is buying a lot of the properties in and developing the lots, they would assume half of that right-of-way. Their construction plans for that subdivision, which was reviewed and seen by you, showed that vacation to occur and was to be done as a future vacation. There was no guarantee that that would ever be vacated. They could then make that part of their lots. When Mr. Larry Guy, if he develops his property, he would get the other half of that vacation if it happens. He could then utilize that in the development of his land if he so chooses.
Mr. Wilson had a comment.
Thank you. A little bit about vacations. So we've come around to, the railroad is taking out the crossing, which is essentially going to close the road. So that's a separate function than vacation. Vacation is the legal process that we go through to divest ourselves of public rights of way. And we hold right-of-way in trust, we don't own it, it's held in trust, and we hold it until such times the public no longer has need of it for transportation purposes essentially. So at that point in time, when we're no longer using it, we essentially go through a process to give that back to the property owners who, under the legal theory at one point in time, dedicated that to the public for so long as it was being used. So because it's being closed by the railroad, that leads one to question if it's closed and it's not being used for a public purpose, at that point, should we go ahead and vacate the property? So that's sort of the legal framework behind what's happening here. On a separate note, there's been a couple comments tonight about potentially a couple of ex parte communications with council members. If that occurred, we probably need to put that in the record and make sure all of you are clear as to what was said and the context of those conversations, so that everybody can essentially evaluate those comments and make sure that there was nothing that was said that, you can't rely on those conversations and making your decision, in other words. And everybody needs to be able to have that same information in front of them. Finally, the one other small tidbit I can throw out to you, I've worked extensively in the past with the International Fire Code. I can tell you that as the properties in this area develop, once you get to a point of 30 lots being developed, you have to have two points of access. So as these areas develop, if they're going to have more than 30 lots, they're going to have to develop an interior roadway system to provide another point of access.
With that, I would like to say something if I can. Mr. Guy did call me up last year sometime, I don't remember when it was, and he didn't tell me what it was about, he just wanted me to come and talk to him. So I went out there, and he said, he was pointing at Whiskey Flats, and he said, "This road is going to be closed." And I said, "Well, I don't know anything about it." I think that was our conversation. And I would look into it, and I did. I came directly to City Hall, I think I spoke with, I might have spoke with, I might have spoke with Rob, spoke with Rob, and I believe that I called you and told you what Rob said. So that is the extent of my communication about this at all. I do have some, I don't really understand it, I guess. I mean, I obviously understand vacation, and I obviously understand that we want to close the road or someone wants to close the road. I don't understand what it means that the railroad is going to close the crossing. All it is, is railroad tracks across a road. It's not like there's no arms there, there's nothing there. What does that mean? I mean, they're obviously not going to tear out the tracks, then the train couldn't go anywhere. I don't get it.
They tear out the plank?
So the physical construction of removing a rail crossing, there are concrete planks and panels which are currently there which the cars travel across. If those weren't there, you would have a six-inch drop and then have to go back up.
Okay, I understand.
So they will pull those out and it will...
I get it, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else? There's a couple.
I just want to comment too...
Excuse me, can I ask real quick before you do? There was a comment that there was a couple council members who had conversed, was there someone else?
Well, I'm trying to think if it is me, because the guys are very active in the community, and I've known them all for years, and at a football game or a basketball game or something, if they're, I certainly didn't go to their house and nobody called me on the phone, but if that conversation in fact happened, it was a random grocery store, basketball game, football game, and kind of, "Did you know that this was happening?" And me saying, "No, I did not."
Good, I appreciate it.
Just for clarification... Just for clarification, it wasn't clear for sure from the, the comments, but it made me question if something had happened. Because it could have happened, as Linda mentioned some time ago, that, that's in some ways a different creature, but I wanted to make sure if there were those contacts, that those were put in the record.
Appreciate, I appreciate both you mentioning and you're right, Carrie, you're at different events and people talk to you and you just don't know, so.
I think I'm a victim of that same situation. It seems like I did talk to Mr. Bill Guy here at the open house on the transportation, I think it was, and brought it to my attention at that point that they were going to close the road and I didn't have a recollection of what was going on. And I've kind of searched my memory banks and I now remember that when we talked about Whiskey Flats, you know, it's kind of like that lens where we were talking about Whiskey Flats and here was this intersection and, you know, there's a crossing here and a crossing here and it made perfect sense. Why would you have two crossings within 100 feet of each other? And, you know, so that when we voted on Whiskey Flats, again, my lens was on Whiskey Flats and not on what that vacation of that road, railroad was going to take out the crossing anyway, so it was kind of like moot point. So we're going to vacate the road, no big deal. So I, you know, I'm sure that when Mr. Guy brought it up, to me, it was like, I don't, I don't really know what, that there's going to be, be an impact. Now that I look at it and I've been able to expand that lens, not only from the guys, but also from the gentleman from the property north, I guess I'm looking for a solution of some sort to make access to Spokane Street from that county pocket. I don't know that I'm really ready to vote on a vacation tonight, other than to table that and come back with another plan to alleviate some of the, the issues that have come up tonight.
Let me do something here real quick. Let me close the public hearing because we're in deliberation at this point, so I think it'd be appropriate. I'll close that public hearing. It started out as questions of John and Rob, but Al, if you have anything...
I'm sorry, I thought we were already there, so.
You beat me to the punch.
Sorry.
Don't know we're deliberating?
Sure. Carrie?
Well, it's which came first, you know, the chicken or the egg? I would prefer that it not be vacated, closed by the city or the railroad. That's still a rural area and I live about five blocks south of that and have for 30 years, so I'm familiar with Guy Road and Grange and all of that. If I lived on Ashworth, I would feel exactly the same way as the people who live up there feel with all of that traffic. And unfortunately, I don't think we can control, control any roads through county. And it's all county pockets at this point. This is a tough one. This is really tough because voting against vacating does not resolve the access issue.
Right. Yeah.
So, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place, but for, I think what we can do is for future, as we see that being developed in the future up there, we'll certainly be a lot more aware of the access.
How to move people out of that area.
Julia, you have a comment?
Mr. Paul, could you do me a favor and, and point on the map of the pointer where the second access point to Grange from Whiskey Flats is going to be? Right there. So two-thirds of Whiskey Flats is to the west of that. So if anybody's going to want to go east, two-thirds of it's, that's on their way. The other third, if they have a choice between taking a paved mule trail or a gravel mule trail up Guy Road, far north out of the way over to Spokane and down, or going less than half a block to a paved road to Grange and over, that's the way they're going to go. So I don't really see Whiskey Flats affecting Guy Road much at all, even without that railroad crossing. Of course, the, the tricky part's the crystal ball, what happens to Mr. Guy's property to the east, everything else. I think that's a, probably a bridge we can jump off when we get to it. Ashworth is our, obviously already designed to handle a much greater traffic load because it just dead ends there to the west. So there's going to be more development there. They've planned for that. Everybody buying a house in there is probably, should have been aware that there's going to be more traffic on that road anyway. I understand where they're coming from, I'm just not seeing the impact that I think people are afraid of. Also, I live in one of the biggest neighborhoods in Post Falls with only two access points too, and the traffic's really not that horrible. And ultimately, if the crossing's closing anyway, what do you do?
Excuse me, but that's... Excuse me, no, no, no comments. Public, public is...
Wrong story.
Nope. Beniamin?
No.
Lynn?
I'm the same way. I struggle with access over to Spokane Street, but I, with what we have before us, I don't see that we have any other way to get over there than to go through there. If the railroad is for sure going to close that crossing, the vacation makes sense. But with the second access coming out onto Grange, then that, again, gives that Whiskey Flats group the option to go east or west, Chase or Spokane Street. And it would serve that subdivision. It just, the rest of the county around that Whiskey Flats subdivision right now would be in question of how you get out of there.
Linda?
Well, I don't, I don't really know, I don't really know what to say. I don't know what to say about it. I, you know, I think I'm with Al, when, when you look at a small piece on a map and you just say, yeah, well, that makes sense to me, but you broaden out the, this, the map. And, and although, on one hand, I just don't think we should say anything about the county pockets because you guys are in a county. You're in the county. On the other hand, if you're going to do, prepare for planning, then I think that you have to take into consideration these fairly large pockets of land. I, I don't know. And kind of like Carrie says, if they're going to take out the crossing anyway, and now I kind of get the idea of what you're talking about by taking out the crossing, you're not going to be able to cross it anyway. So if that in fact is happening, I, I guess I'm with Joe. The vacation makes sense. Give the property back to the adjoining property owners if they're taking out the crossing.
Well, my comment on it is that, you know, I'm going to share everybody's concern that anytime you start getting development, you have to wonder what, where the traffic's going to go and what roads are going to handle it. Anything we could do to get, to improve access to the east to get over to Spokane Street is beneficial. If there's a second access point on Grange Road and, and that was one of the, no, you're shaking your head. There, there is a second access point planned, is what they're saying. And, and there is, there is the opportunity then to get down to that, get to Grange and get over. And I look at this because the traffic, as all that has developed, impacts me because I live on Chase Road, so I, I deal with all that traffic as well. But again, if you can't cross the road, if they're going to pull the planking out, then, you know, I, I don't know what the, what the benefit would be of not, not vacating it. So if there's no comments, I would entertain a motion if anyone so chooses.
I will move to approve the, where are we at? Guy Road vacation.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion second, further discussion. And then, fellas, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye. Motion passes. Next up is unfinished business. Tonight we have none. Citizens' issues. And this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. And if anyone wishes to testify, come forward, give your name for the record and we'll give you five minutes. Seeing none tonight, we have no new business. Ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Administrative staff reports?
We have none.
Mayor comments. The only thing I'd like to say is that over the weekend, we lost two members of the Post Falls city families, Paul Hofer and Michael Wolf. And, you know, please remember the, the Hofer and the Wolf family in your prayers and, in your thoughts, you know, respect their privacy, help them deal with their losses and offer your support whenever you can see them. It's a, anytime you lose someone, it's a tragedy. And to have two of them within a bite-a-days period of stuff, so I hope the Hofer family and the Wolf family know that they are in our thoughts and our prayers. Council comments?
I have a couple things. First of all, I'm just wondering, Mayor, if we could possibly, maybe at the, at the next meeting, have Russ Connell talk to us a little bit about the press release about the snow berm. I got four or five phone calls from elderly citizens who were really upset with the way that that was worded in the press and were afraid that they were going to lose their ability to have those berms taken out. And their main comment was to me, they don't use the parks, they don't use a lot of other city services, and they really were worried about that, that snow berm removal. So if we could talk a little bit about that next time. Also, I just...
Excuse me, real quick.
We're prepared to provide an update tonight. We know no decision can be made, but we're prepared to...
It's up to you, your meeting.
Do you want to finish your second comment and then we'll...
Sure.
Can we do that? Can we, we've gone past that, can we go back and have a...
It's, it's not an item that's up for council consideration, so.
Okay.
My second comment is, I'd just like to, again, thank city administrator Shelley Endurude, Lynn Borders, Carrie Thorson, Al Wolf, our fire commissioner, Joe Dolefield, and acting fire chief, Chief Ryan, and all the dozens of people and Schneidmiller family members that came for, clear across the country, some of them came from Philadelphia, to join us in the dedication for the Gladys Schneidmiller, dedication for the fountain. It turned out beautiful. I did read your comments, Mayor, thank you for that. And just really would like to thank Gary Schneidmiller again and the Schneidmiller Foundation for all of the things that they give the city and do for the city. And just really appreciate, there was a lot of people there, it was very, very nice. So again, thank you.
But you forgot to thank yourself because you were actively involved in that. We appreciate all you've done on that, so thank you. Other council comments? Will we bring Russ up?
Mayor Jacobson, members of the council, Russ Connell, Public Services Director, thank you for your, for your question in regards to the snow berm removal program. And I, and I can say full-heartedly, we are continuing to have that program. What I'd like to do though is, is introduce you to our new streets maintenance supervisor, Paul Kenny, and, and give him the opportunity to speak to you and, and give you an update on where this is at. So if you would, I'd like to introduce Paul and give him a chance to introduce himself to you and, and the citizens of Post Falls.
Thanks, Russ. Welcome, Paul.
Thanks, thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for having me. So I wanted to take a few minutes and offer some clarification on the snow berm program. I wanted to first start by, I wanted to first start by saying that as the 2017, 2018, we're going to continue doing this program as we have in the past. The letters that go out to the citizens will be mailed out on or before this Friday. We've also tried to look at some other avenues for getting that information out there. It is on the city's website. People can download that information and print those forms there as well. It is also available if they call or email us at thestreetsinfo. All that information's on the website as well. So I would, I can talk about the press release. We kit, did, we worked with the PIO and drafted up a press release to put out so that we could get the information out there to folks and let them know that there was other avenues to get those forms if they, if they wanted to via email or to get on the website and download them. So not a ton of changes, well, actually, very minor changes to the program itself for this year, so.
The one lady talked to me about, there was a word in the press release, I can't remember what it was, but it was something like, not completely remove the snow or something like that. I can't remember the exact words.
Yes, so in an effort to offer some clarification, we put out the press release because the program is, is a snow berm reduction program and there seemed to be some, there seemed to be some confusion a while ago. I was reading through some of the past minutes and there used to be a snow berm removal program and now they have renamed it the snow berm reduction program. And one of the reasons that that's important is some of the vehicles that we have to go out and do those removals, the plow trucks more or less, they can't get the entire snow berm out, out of the driveways, given the size of them. The loaders and the graders are much more maneuverable. So we wanted to make sure that we got that information out to folks and that nobody was, you know, taken back by that if there was still a little bit of the snow berm left in there. So we will, like I said, continue the program that we have always done. I think it's served the city well. And I would encourage you to, if you have citizens that have questions, please forward them to our office, we're, we're happy to help them.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
Next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Need adjourned, thank you very much.